Welcome, everyone. We'll get started. So this is not technically an official school committee meeting. We don't have a quorum. But it is the budget presentation for the community with Q and A. So Dr. Graham will be doing that. So I'll turn it over to him. And if any of you would feel better about, you know, sitting up front, if it's easier to see, feel free to move otherwise.
I requested to have this be a very formal event this evening. Apparently it's supposed to be an informal event, so. I dressed up, but we do appreciate. So, welcome, everyone. I'm going to quickly stop speaking, and I'm going to turn it over to Tom LaFleur, our Director of Finance and Operations, who is far more, has a far greater detailed understanding of all the intricacies of the budget than I do. I will certainly jump in and try to speak to big picture stuff, and where I can add some flavor, I will do that. And when there are questions, please direct those questions to me, and I'll do the best I can to answer them, but I certainly might lean on Tom to try to answer questions. And if there are questions that we're not able to answer at this time, we'll try to make sure we get back to you as soon as possible with answers. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom to start the budget presentation.
Thank you. Welcome to our formal informal floor. All right, here we go. So here's our 24 proposed budget. We'll kind of go through how it evolved. I'm already losing my voice, so please wave at me if you can't hear. Again, we're restating the school committee's budget goal: fully support the academic and social-emotional growth of our students while respecting the fiscal constraints or restraints facing whelan residents and the needs of other town departments. So we started, and this is Dr. Yeezy's slide, with the district improvement plan. In the fall of '22, I think they were targeted on post-COVID and all the needs coming out of there. '22 to '23, we're now looking at some equity issues. In the next year, we're looking at math, as some of you here might be participating in the project with Michelle Crowell to pick a new math curriculum. That is in the capital budget, by the way, it was funded. And we'll continue with social-emotional into next year. I was asked to show the per pupil expenditures for this group of like districts. The Department of Education categorizes certain districts by economics. So this is our group. You can see we're number 11 out of 13 on per pupil spending. This is a couple of years ago, because not all the information's current with the DSE. So where we started with the superintendent's recommended budget is we started with the '23 budget, at $47.1 million. Our proposed increase was $2.8 million for a recommended level service budget of $50,001,482. That does not include any of the cost of living adjustments. As most of you know, none of our bargaining agreements go past this year. That was budgeted on the town side. So where we are now is $48,803,195. And I'll show you how we got back down to that number here in a few minutes. So the dollar increase over fiscal '23 is 1.6 million, or 3.5%. Of that, personnel increase is almost 1.4 million. 1.142 is contractual. We have $70,000, a total of a 1.2 FTE add for '24. It's a lot of .2, .2, .2 at the middle school. And we brought three TCW teachers into the budget. The non-personnel increase is only $244,000, but that's net. We removed $1,073,500 out of the budget, moved it to the town. So the town is taking over all utility costs for all buildings. So that, all of these numbers are net that amount. So it looks like we have a $1.6 million increase. It's really 2.6. So some of our budget drivers, special education's driving most of it. And Dr. Cataldo's here, if we have specific questions. The fiscal '23 approved budget was 3.6 million. We're looking at 5.3 for '24. What's driving that is special education tuition and transportation. So that's a $1.7 million increase just in special education. We made an attempt to bring a full-day kindergarten on. To date, this year and prior, .65 with every kindergarten teacher and parent is on the budget, with .35 being covered by the revolving fund, paid by user fees for the program. So that was nine teachers and nine TAs. What we're bringing in for user fees is $457,000. So that's been cut. You'll see that later. We made an attempt. So how we get from $50 million to $48 is a story. On 12/14, we submitted the superintendent's recommended budget for, again, $50,001,000. To get to the town manager's reduction of $598,000, we cut full-day kindergarten. And some of the proposed staffing increases at the middle school were reduced a little bit. The administration at the school and at Central Office worked on scheduling, so we could cut some of those gains down a little bit. So the town manager submitted a budget of $49,403,195. Okay, that number's right at the top again. The finance committee of the town cut us by another $600,000. So we had a proposed EL teacher in the budget. That's no longer there. A proposed addition of a sped teacher at Locur. That's been removed, and we removed $450,000 from sped transportation. With a note at the bottom there that it's a potential town meeting appropriation separately to create a special education reserve fund and fund it with $150,000. So they're giving a little bit back in a different way.
Can I just, I want to highlight this for a minute. The sped transportation, that doesn't mean that we don't still have the obligation to pay that. Like sped transportation, that's not a number that we said, "Well, we think it's going to cost." Those are tied to specific individual students and what the cost will be to transport those students. These are students who are educated outside of the district. And the state will reimburse a certain amount of money to districts. This is the circuit breaker. So the state will reimburse a certain amount of money to districts for out-of-district tuition and potentially out-of-district transportation. It's not the full amount. There's formulas, which I would have to turn to Tom to recap those formulas. But some part of out-of-district tuition and transportation costs can be reimbursed from the state. The message that we got from the state was be skeptical about out-of-district transportation being reimbursed, because there's a pot of money, finite pot of money exists at the state level. They use that to reimburse for out-of-district tuition across all the Commonwealth, and then what money is left over can then be applied towards reimbursements for transportation. But if there's not money left over, then you're not going to get money reimbursed for transportation. So we budgeted with the assumption that we were not going to get money back from the state to reimburse us for out-of-district transportation, because that's the message we were hearing from the state. So by removing, first, it was $300,000 from the out-of-district transportation budget. $300,000 is the maximum amount of money that we could get reimbursed from the state. So the best-case scenario for reimbursement for out-of-district transportation is $300,000. So we have now removed $450,000. And this was because the finance committee voted a budget that was $600,000 left after we'd already cut roughly $600,000. The finance committee then voted a budget that was an additional $600,000 less. And so one of the overriding factors for the school committee, and for me, was to try to not have that impact existing personnel. And so we tried to come up with cuts that would accomplish that. But that $450,000, $300,000 of that may come back or may not come back, but the cost exists, whether it gets reimbursed by the state or not. So if the state doesn't reimburse, that's still $300,000 that has to be found in the next year's budget. And that additional $150,000, we know the state's not going to give us that. So there is the possibility, if approved at a town meeting, correct me if I'm wrong on the mechanics of this, at town meeting, a special education stabilization fund would need to be approved by the voters, and then the town has agreed to move $150,000 of town money into that that could then help offset those costs that we know are going to happen next year. But there's a number of ifs in the sentences that I just used, just to keep people apprised of where that money is coming from and what the potential risks are in the future. And again, the school committee's objective, my objective as well, but the school committee voted it, was to try to protect existing personnel. Sorry. Go ahead. So one of these things, so let me speak to both of these cuts. So what we did is we cut positions that had been included in the budget. These positions were not included in the budget because we thought they were nice to have. These were what we thought were "gotta haves." We have, we are anticipating an increase in the number of EL students, students who receive English language services, services that we are legally obligated to provide to students. One of the reasons we're able to predict with relative high degree of confidence the number of EL students we will have coming in next year is because this year at the Children's Way, we have been doing home language screenings earlier with families than we might not, than we might have otherwise done. Typically, that wouldn't happen until maybe in the spring. I think there was, there were one or two years that we did that as a new practice. But oftentimes, we wouldn't find about new, in particular, rising kindergarteners who might require EL services. We wouldn't find that out until shortly before the beginning of the school year, potentially. We are getting that information earlier for students who are in the Children's Way. And so we're able to predict with a decent degree of accuracy what our EL numbers we think are going to look like next year. One variable is, and it's a positive variable, is that we have students who will eventually exit EL services because they gain a certain degree of proficiency. There are levels, there are assessments that are done through access testing each year. So there are some students who will fluff out. They will get to a point where their English language skills are such that they no longer require English language services. So we predict how many students we think we're going to have next year. If the number goes down, that can be good news, because some students are at a point where they no longer need services. But again, we want to make sure that we're anticipating the number of students and have the resources to be able to meet those legally obligated needs. Special education at Locur, so there are two pieces to this. So the Locur population has grown over the last five years as the Spanish immersion program has grown. More students are going to Locur than would otherwise have gone there. Locur traditionally had two sections in each grade level, whereas Happy Hollow would have three, and Claypit would typically have four-ish, and maybe it would go down to three if we had a really small class one year, or we'd go up to five if we had a really large class one year. So as Locur has gotten larger, they have more students at Locur than they have had. Next year, they'll have roughly the same number of students as Happy Hollow. With the total number of students, that means that there are going to be more students who need special education services. So part of that proposed sped teacher is special education FTEs, making sure we have enough special education teachers at Locur to meet the special education service needs of the students there. Part of that also is students who are in the Spanish immersion program. Our obligation, when they are taught in Spanish, in a certain subject area, if we need to provide special education support in that subject area, we need to provide it in Spanish. So part of that also is making sure that we have someone or someones who are able to provide special education services in the target language, which is Spanish, for all subject areas up through pretty much third grade. In third grade, we introduce a little bit of math in English. And then in fourth and fifth grade, it'll shift to some languages being taught in English, so it's possible in fourth and fifth grade, some languages could, special education support could come in English as opposed to Spanish. But we need to have Spanish education, we need to have Spanish-language special education services available. So part of that is FTEs, and part of that is the specialized Spanish language services. So I recommended, and the school committee voted that recommendation, to remove these two positions, because it means it doesn't impact people. The need still exists, and so what we need to do as a district now is look internally to make sure that we are meeting, and we will meet, all of our legal obligations in terms of providing services. I don't want to get too into the weeds on it, but there are a number of things that we'll be doing. And one of the things we'll need to do certainly is look at what our special education caseloads look like at the elementary level across the district, to make sure that we are meeting all of our special education needs at each of the schools. So there's going to be, there already has been some, and will continue to be a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Tom and I will be doing a lot of work and continuing to look at the budget and see if there are any places where there's possible flexibility. This is not a budget that has fat on it. This is a pretty lean budget. So it's not a budget where there are a lot of places to look. But we will continue to go through that process, and I'll be working very closely with Dr. Cataldo, with the special education department, and with the elementary principals, to look at what our special education population looks like at the elementary level and how we might need to, decisions that we might need to make to make sure that we are providing services to all of those students, which we will. Do we want to do questions now, or do we want to do questions at the end? Do you want to?
We're almost there.
Do you mind just wait and let us finish, and then we'll come back? All right, go. Put a pin in that, and we'll come back. Thanks. And I promise we can come back to the slide if you need to come back to the slide. Oh, that was it? Now you can ask your question. Questions, sir?
So is that what you were successful in not, something's wrong with it, but in terms of not having the composition that actually has staff?
Yes. Yes. So we are not, in this budget, we are not cutting people as a result of those budget reductions.
That's my question.
In any budget year, there will be, maybe I'm giving you more of an answer than you needed or wanted, but in any budget year, there will also be situations where people retire, or people resign. One year, when I was a principal, I had a teacher who, she got engaged, they decided they were going to go live in New Zealand. And so, you know, this was in, like, in May or June. So inevitably, there will be people who end up leaving the district. Sometimes, when that happens, you look at a position and you figure out, is there a creative way to fill that differently? So sometimes, things like that happen. But the budget has been built so that we are not cutting people.
No one that wants, unless someone chooses.
Yeah, we are not cutting.
Awesome, that's all right.
Yep, of course. Yes?
Hi, thank you very much. I have two questions, one of which, do your best, and I appreciate it's not fair, this is just entirely, like, I'm now confused.
Rock and roll.
So I sat through a very lengthy FinCom meeting, saw the school committee representatives also sitting through a lengthy FinCom meeting. My understanding was the proposed December budget was an 11% year-over-year increase, which far surpassed the town manager's guideline. What you recommend, presented tonight, Mr. Flor, I think said 6.5.
Yeah, I caveated at the bottom with that $1 million of utilities that we pulled out.
So that's what that was? Okay, okay.
I think the finance committee was doing apples to apples. So by doing that, they put the utilities back in, which is what.
And the utilities are still in, I mean, maybe I'm telling you things you already know, the utilities are still in. Like, at the end of the day, there's a town overall budget. So the utilities, it's not like we reduced the amount of money that's being spent on utilities or the amount of total money budget for utilities. Instead, that shifted to a town-side expense rather than a school system-side expense. So I don't know, is that the numerator or the denominator? One of those changed, so it changes what the percentage looks like, depending upon whether you put it in or take it out.
Got it. The second goes outside. No, that's okay. My second question is, again, I just don't know, but looking at the transportation and understanding the, I realize the state decision increased out-of-district tuition costs, that got approved.
14%.
That was some of the increase.
That is some of it, yes.
But then, there's also just a significant rise in the number of out-of-district placements. With transportation, is there any discussion, like, district to district, about trying to combine transportation costs or leverage students going to the same out-of-district placements from neighboring towns? Like, this is an area where I have always felt myself in education background of, like, special education, we could be doing more district, like, working together. And I don't know if that's.
Do you mind, Dr. Cataldo, if I bring you into this conversation at this point?
Sure. So we do do that. Not every school has matching, depending on the grades and how far apart students are. So we might have an iteration, for instance, with side grade, but if the students are so far apart that it takes 25 minutes to grab them, it's not, it's basically responsible because they're all going to be late to school. I'll also tell you that in that transportation budget, that really isn't just students in out-of-district. We have students in district who require specialized transportation, and that number includes those students as well. I don't want to exclude.
So part of the time? Like, they're.
We have students we transport into the school and out of the school at the end of the day who need that transportation, or they won't be coming to school for a variety of reasons. But, so we have some in district, but obviously, the majority of our students who are in out-of-district placements generally, we provide that transportation by law. So we do look at other districts where we can, and upon occasion, we do try to pick up students and move together. It doesn't happen as frequently as we would like, because the schools don't match it. It also changes from year to year. That also doesn't come from law state, it comes from the transportation companies who will notify us. They have a student in another district who's also traveling to the school. Is it okay if we put the two students together? And things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking all of this unanticipated sped changes out of the equation, compared to last year's budget, how much more have we added to, like, how comparable would this year's budget be to last year's budget? I mean, that's also a FinCom, they were, obviously, 11% looked dramatic, but compared to a typical year, if you take out this very unanticipated sped change, how comparable are we to last year?
I think the, I don't know if Tom did that specific analysis, but the special education increase, some of that, and you alluded to this, some of that at the state, and correct me if I'm explaining this incorrectly, actually, BJ, you correct me if I'm explaining this incorrectly. At the state, the state gets to determine each year how much, like, private schools can increase their tuition and other costs for out-of-district transportation.
District tuition.
District tuition. And normally, that's going to go up by a very small, single-digit number, like 1% to 2%, something like that. The state did a 14% increase. So right off the bat, there was a 14% increase, even if everything else remained the same, in those out-of-district costs, both tuition and transportation, I believe. So some of the special education increase was going to be completely outside of our control, and it was just going to happen. But the increase was more than just that 14%. So if it was a $1.7-ish million increase in those budget lines, some of that was going to happen anyway, but I think it's, I mean, how much of an increase are we talking about? If you take out 1.7 million?
900, 900,000.
I just don't see us adding anything else to our budget, right? Like, it's not like we're being extro.
No.
The change is just, I'm asking, like, this would be a normal year's budget, except for this significant.
It's approximately a million-dollar increase. But again, the COLA are not in there because they're budgeting at the town. So we have no bargaining agreements under contract after June 3rd.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but when you say a million-dollar increase, people might think, "Oh, that's a million dollars of new spending." I would imagine that a significant percentage of that is because we have teachers who go up the step, and so they naturally are going to get paid more. So step and lane increases, I would imagine, comprise a significant part of that million-dollar increase in terms of.
Eight percent inflation now to deal with the contracted services and maintenance and everything else we do.
I would, I don't, we haven't done the analysis, so I'm just, I'm a little cautious, but a little asterisk at the end of what I'm about to say, but if you take out the one point, if you take out the special education increase, I think we're looking at a budget where people would actually be saying, "Well, why aren't you trying to do more?"
No, yeah. I mean, you asked for a level of service, but this feels like a.
This is level service, and then we went in a bunch of different places and took money out.
Would it be appropriate, Perry, Tom, to talk about how last year's budget didn't, how many, how much the sped increase happened this year? You know what I'm talking about?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that it's not all, like, it's based on the 23 numbers.
I mean, do you want, I can do a broad stroke, and the two of you can. So Jeannie's pointing out that not all of the special education increases are truly FY24 increases. In other words, there are costs that we are assuming in FY23 that were not reflected in last year's budget. So the budget was voted last year, end of January, beginning of February. So since that time, there would have, there have been some increases in special education that would not have been reflected in the FY23 budget. So when we say FY24, it looks like a lot of increase just for the, for the next school year, whereas actually, as the district were absorbing a decent chunk of those costs for this year, which is beyond what the budget was voted, so we're having to figure out creative ways to do that as well.
Could that happen again? The next year?
So when we finished, when I walked in the door July 1st, we had a tiny surplus, I should say tiny, roughly quarter of a million dollars. So legally, we can prepay up to 25% of the next year's tuition. So we prepaid $250,000, and I had approximately $750,000 of revenue from Circuit Breaker coming in this year. So we use the prepay, and we will almost use every penny of that Circuit Breaker this year. So where I finished the year, effectively, a million dollars last year, we're going to have zero. So we have 1.7 increase, about a million of it is good in this year, or late '22 into '23, you know, after the budget was underway.
Which means less flexibility for next year. Anyway, go ahead.
I'm asking this as a tax-paying resident. And I know that you had proposed putting kindergarten to be full-day, and now it looks like it's gone back to help save the money, so, well, to meet the FinCom's cuts. So the reason that we don't go full-day is because it's, how do I put this? It earns money to offset the budget so that the people that get to.
$2,700 per student is the fee.
It's a money-making proposition as opposed to making it a full-day kindergarten like other towns?
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'm going to quibble with the term "money-making," and maybe you won't, maybe you won't agree with my quibble. I would say, I mean, it creates revenue to offset the cost of offering full-day K. And the school committee, not to speak for you all, but the school committee has, just about every year, for many, many years, had the desire to move that into, where's Kathy? I mean, Kathy's here, right? I mean, that was, for years and years and years, the school committee has tried to move that into the budget. And while it is not, it's, it's not the same thing. It's a revenue decrease as opposed to a cost increase. The cost stays the same, it's just getting rid of the revenue, the fees that help to pay for that. It ends up working out the same way, that it's, you know, a $400,000 to $500,000 impact to the budget. So in any year when that is, if, in any year when that's going to happen, if it happens all in one year, that is, you know, close to a half a million dollars that needs to be accounted for in the budget, which then eliminates the opportunity to do lots of other things that you might want to do. So if you're going to do that, that's probably the thing you're going to do in that year. The school committee started this year really, really wanting to do that. The superintendent proposed, "Let's do this, let's make this happen." And going back to, like, the question about special education, and what would the budget have looked like if those costs hadn't gone up? You know, could there have been flexibility to make that happen without the special education increases, potentially? You know, I don't know, that doesn't mean that necessarily it would have happened. But if we're going to, there was a proposed budget, full-day K was in there, and then when there was a need to cut $600,000, again, trying to protect people and trying to protect to the greatest extent possible services that we're providing to students, that was the kind of easiest place to go to, with the recognition that it is continuing to ask our rising kindergarten families to pay a $2,700 fee to have their children in full-day K, which is what 90-plus percent of our families choose to do.
You all have a very, very complicated jingo game, for lack of a better word, which I think everyone appreciates to a degree, but you want the detail, and complexity, and it's very impressive, lots of juggle. Similarly, the FinCom does as well, in terms of town fiscal restraint. The full-day kindergarten question is an excellent one. I'm mindful of it, because it's come up year after year. We, I think a lot of us in the town feel like we should have been able to do that some time ago. We're facing down the heels of looking at infrastructure and building, as a relatively small town, that there's a lot of headwinds coming at us. And I think to also see this incredibly significant increase in one year in special education costs begs a sort of longer-term strategic question of, you know, what do we do, if anything, to try to get ahead of those education mandates? And I guess, can you talk a little bit, maybe it's a question for you, Dr. Cataldo, or Dr. Graham? How does the district look at out-of-district placements that maybe matriculate, right? Not students who come to us with needs that would always be serviced out of the district. But is there sort of a, you know, longitudinal, like, root cause analysis? Do you look at, are we seeing a trend of a certain type of specific learning disability that we see at a certain higher-level point, starting to trend out of district? Like, how do you think about that year-over-year in terms of, I mean, very candidly, like, are we doing enough early on? Are there kids that we see matriculating out of district that we maybe could have prevented? And how do we think about that? Or is that not a thing? Because each student is very much fact-dependent. I'm just trying to understand.
I'll start with a couple of answers, then I want to turn it over to you, because you can speak in far more detail than I can. So I'll give you one very concrete example, and that's the learning-based classroom, the language-based classroom at Claypit Hill. So that's something that was built to start this year, and I saw, I thought I saw Jen Soha, who's here, who's in that classroom. We are servicing, we are providing services to kids in that classroom who, being a little bit speculative, I can't remember, BJ could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but who might have otherwise, you know, been candidates to look at out-of-district placements. And building that resource means a couple of things. To your point, yes, we're able to think about keeping kids in district and providing the services that we, that we need to, to kids. And that's, those are the kinds of services that if we're able to do that really effectively at an early age, I mean, the, those language-based skills are the absolute foundation for success in, as kids get into upper elementary, middle school, and high school. So building programs like that absolutely accomplishes all the things that we want to accomplish. It's fiscally very responsible in the long term, and it's the right thing to do by our students, and keeping them in the district rather than potentially going out of district. The challenge is that, as a general rule, it's very difficult to build a program, a new program, that has, that's cost-neutral. And Dr. Easy was able to do that for the language-based classroom going into this year. But that's a very... It's not common to be able to do that. Typically, typically, if you're going to, you know, build a new program, superintendent comes and says, "Hey, school committee, here are some new FTEs that we need, and here's an analysis of why we think we need them, and here's how this is going to help to impact us positively over time. So, we're going to be spending some money in the short term. It's going to save us money in the long term." But you typically have to spend money to build programs to end up then helping save money and providing better services to kids in the long run. Dr. Cataldo has had a fair amount of experience building programs, so she can, I mean, she can speak to what that looks like in the variety of districts. Do you want to say anything more beyond what I said?
Sure. So, yes, as to the biggest question, do we do a cost analysis? Do you do longitudinal looks at what's going on in the district? And I've only been here nine months. But yes, I actually started looking this summer. And of course, we have had a larger-than-typical number of students who have left us in the last 12 months. I know I had a conversation with Mr. Ryan about the fact that a lot of districts already had programs built before the pandemic came. You did not have those programs built. And as a result, I think the staff here, first of all, I have to tell you, they're remarkable. I go into class every day and see remarkable things. And most importantly, I see children smiling. That's a telltale sign that they're doing a good job. So, I want to start with that and make sure that, you know, we understand what's going on. But you have to have programs. And the problem is that during the pandemic, when we might have serviced some of those very targeted students, we didn't have those programs built, whereas other districts did. So, that was a disadvantage for you. The other disadvantages, you are a much smaller district than, say, Framingham, Newton, Dedham, some of the larger districts where you might get a cohort of students that you can make a program for. But if you have a student come in who's very unique, you can't have a party of one for our kids. It's not fair to them socially to be by themselves all day. So, that might be, we'll look outside the district for them. You're right, we do have students arrive, and they might be mentally complex, or they might have other issues that we know would be unfair to try to service them in our district and make their home with us. So, we have to find them alternate homes for their time. But if we can build programs, then it's really, it behooves us to do that. The problem with building this forthcoming year is what has to go out, what has to come in. And also, we have to build trust. Like, when we build it, we can't say, "Well, parent in the meeting, trust us, don't worry. We're going to build it, you're going to love it." And then you come in September, and you don't love it because you see the holes in it. So, we have to really be thorough about how we build our programs and really look at the timeline. So, I know when I was speaking with Mr. Ryan, I said, "We need some language-based programs. We need some programs that deal with students who are struggling socially, emotionally, right now. We need to have more certified Orton-Gillingham teachers in the district. We need more certified Wilson teachers in the district." That will not happen overnight, you're in a lean budget. But every time, we have to stop and take a look, which at this point now, I'm in the Solifer's office every single morning. It's like, the minute he's in the door, I'm in there. I need help. But the fact is, I'm trying to be very methodical, and I'm also looking at when some of our students are going to graduate, and that money will come back into the district, where we will then be able to put it into those programs as they should be. So, I'm hoping you never have another pandemic to deal with. But if you do, I want the structure in place that will allow all our students to be able to get what they need at home. I'm not a big proponent about sending students out of district. It's not the fiscal piece of it that bothers me. I've shared this with parents, that if your child has to go 45 minutes this way, ultimately, their best friend is going to be the child that lives 45 minutes this way. And then on the weekend, you're looking at a 90-minute drive to make sure there's a play bay, one house or the other. So, the fact is, they miss their afternoons in the community when they could be integrated into sports and musical things and any other kinds of activities. So, the best thing to do is have them at home. Because the minute they're away, they do get disconnected from the community. And they're our children. And as far as I'm concerned, they're our children. Don't we want them home with us if we can have them that way? So, I think it's really imperative. I'm looking at what the building process has to look like beginning next year. And even though I'm in interim and I'll be gone, either this year or next year, the fact is, I want to roll out like five years of what it should look like, to help build what you need. So, in the future, it's something reliable. The other thing we're doing is, we belong to collaboratives, which help us to fill some of those holes that we can't fill in our own districts because we have students where they might only be one student who requires a certain kind of program. So, right now, we're looking, we belong to the Educational Cooperative, which is located in Wallpole, which is a drive. We're also looking at some of the more local collaborators, like the Exsept Collaborative, which is right over there, Offal Oak Street in the immediate, which would be a very short drive for our students. But that also takes time. It takes approximately three years after joining to reap any of the benefits of being a member district. So, there's a lot of things that happen, but that gives us greater opportunity to then match up with other districts that might have programs in their district and, say, for our children. So, I've been thinking about all of this all the way through. And we'll just keep thinking about it.
Can I go back, Gretchen, to your question about full-day K? Chris reminded me of something. There were conversations during the budget development process about some alternative ways to try to get to full-day K other than a $450,000, $500,000 increase in one year. So, the idea of a phased-in approach. And there were two different, correct me if I'm wrong, but there were two different ideas that were discussed. One was a multi-year, whether it's a three or a five-year, essentially, over time, reducing that $2,700 fee by some, you know, reduce it by a quarter each year. And then after four years, there is no cost associated with it, but it's only a quarter of the cost each year being absorbed into the budget. So, that's one way of approaching it. There was also a creative idea. There is some remaining money on the town side, ARPA funds, which go back to COVID, the money that came from the federal government. The town had already made a decision about how to allocate those funds. And so, there was an attempt to go to the town and see if they could actually kind of unallocate. Most of those things are going to infrastructure-y stuff, like I think the...
Capital.
Yeah, and there was, there's like the water treatment stuff. I think a lot of that money's allocated there. I mean, it's, you know, it's several millions of dollars that remains. And so, there was, there was a question about whether or not some of that money could be pulled back, and that could be used to phase in full-day K over, I think it was a three-year period, where next year it could be, that could cover the full cost of full-day K, the next year would cover half the cost, and half of it would go into the budget. And in the final year, the budget would pick up all of it. But that, my understanding is that ultimately, those conversations didn't go anywhere. The town had already made decisions about how they wanted to allocate that money. And so, they didn't, they didn't think it was a good idea to revisit those decisions. So, that's, you know, there are some creative ways to try to do full-day K over time. But that ended up not being something that made it into this year's budget, or next year's budget, I should say. Yes?
Those T C W teachers, are those set teachers or...
Which teachers?
The T C W teachers that are...
Correct, those are. Those are teachers that are in...
They're not subsidized by tuition in the same way that full-day K teachers are subsidized by tuition?
Correct. The special education, so when T C W's structure changed for this year, all five of the classrooms now have a special education, a licensed special education teacher leading that classroom. And so, we then absorb the cost of... It used to be that two of the teachers at T C W, only two of the classrooms, last year, I think, were designated as classrooms where students with special needs might be integrated. And this year, it's five, and so, all, so last year, only two teachers at T C W were part of the operating budget. This year, all five of those teachers are part of the operating budget. So, there are still fees that are paid for kids to go to T C W, unless, you know, the child has special needs. And so, in which case, there wouldn't be fees, or wouldn't be fees for part of the time. So, those, the fees that are paid still go to offset a lot of the costs of T C W, but not the costs of those special education teachers. Whereas kindergarten teachers is like a .65, .35 thing. That's not the case with special education teachers. They are fully, those FTEs are fully within the budget.
And I think you could also say that that's part of our, to answer Beth's question earlier, Gretchen, strategy, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That goes back to the question about trying to intervene with students sooner rather than later, and hopefully get them on a more successful path earlier. Other questions?
Actually, I have one more. It was more about the finance one. So, the, I guess, the, I guess, I'll try to say. So, the, it sounds like the COLA increases, that all goes typically to the town budget, not the school budget?
I think they're calling it unallocated.
Yeah, but essentially, it doesn't go to the school budget.
It will, when the contracts get settled.
Okay.
It gets, I believe, by vote at a town meeting. It gets moved from a town line to a school system line.
And then the staff increases and the education increases, the staff? Does that go in the school budget?
That's already in there. So, there's step-in-lane increases. So, step is, if I've got five years of experience this year, I go to step six, and I make more money than I did.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if that was out of the school budget or if that's out of...
That's budgeted into the operating budget. So, COLAs are, right now, live with the town. They don't, they're not reflected in the operating budget. Or, and COLAs haven't been decided yet that we're, the school committee is negotiating with the Teachers Association right now. But step-in-lane increases, we did budget those in the operating budget.
Is that normally how that works?
Yes.
But except during, once the contract's signed, the COLA is part of the operating budget each year.
Yes.
So, there's contracts for it?
Yes, and then it lives in the operating...
And it lives in the operating budget until the next year.
Okay, because I was like, oh, the school issues and what, into the school?
Until the next negotiation's over. Three years, it'll live there and be part of it. And we're negotiating, I think, Tom, you alluded to this. It's not just the Teachers Association that we're, the school committee is bargaining with. It's also WISA, which is the Wayland Education Secretaries Association, which includes teacher assistance, admin assistance, and then the Custodial Association and the Food Services Association. So, all of those more bargaining units, yet we all bargain those at the same time? Anything else? All right, awesome. Thanks so much for coming here tonight.
So, come-to-town meeting. Because we, I'm, can I make a plug? We have two important things. Is the, what Tom alluded to, the Special Education Reserve Fund that we're establishing. It has to be established by a vote at town meeting that will include initial funding of it. So, that's important, so that we are able to have funds there to help us when situations like this occur. And then, we have to vote on the budget, so, yes.
Quick question then. What, worst-case scenario, what's the plan if that, whatever cost for spend is not approved at town meeting?
Well, we'll have to...
There's $150,000 budgeted cost in the budget.
Yeah.
Right, so basically, it impacts the entire school budget, not just special education to students getting out of district transportation?
Right, at the end of the day, it's a top-line budget. You know, I mean, people get into the weeds and things are allocated. You know, we do that very carefully. But at the end of the day, it's a top-line budget. And so, if there's $150,000 of cost, like, it got to come from somewhere. So, you have to go to other places in the budget to try to find it. Yeah, Elizabeth?
So, at the moment, what we're looking at is, to meet the requirements, we are not cutting positions, but we are not able to increase to manage. So, those people who are currently staffed may be asked to do more, more spread across things.
Yeah, so on a quibble, you said, "We're not cutting positions." We did cut positions, we cut two positions. The school committee voted to cut two positions, but we didn't cut people.
Okay.
So, there are two positions that we had planned for next year that are no longer in the budget. And we still have the same obligation. There was, there was a reason why those positions were in the budget, because we have services we need to provide to students, and we still need to provide those services. And so, we have to figure out how to do that without those two positions. And so, I'm cautious about speculating exactly what that's going to look like. But we have an obligation, we have a legal obligation to meet those services, so we're going to do that. So, we have to do that with the existing staff that we have, not with two additional staff.
So, those staff are going to be asked to do more things or...
Again, I'm cautious to...
Fair enough.
Because what exactly that looks like is something we're going to continue to work on. But we will have to figure out how to meet those needs without having staff.
Got it.
Yep.
So, a question I have is, obviously, one of those positions is in the Spanish-American Special Ed, which is currently being serviced by .7 of person, which is crazy when you think about, that's five full classes with not even a full-time specialized teacher. So, one, horrible for that, for staff coaching. Two, that's a very specialized person who's bilingual and able to provide those services and is certified to provide service in Spanish.
Yep.
I'm kind of confused as to who, who we have, who's going to be able to magically go over and provide services for specialized in Spanish, who doesn't often, like, you know, because we don't have that person. So, I'm just asking, like, how is that going to, how do we make the shuffleboard for that?
So, I don't have an answer for you yet, and I'm very cautious about going too far down a speculative line. So, I'm very aware of the challenge that you just identified in figuring out how we're going to meet, like, we have an obligation to make sure not just that we're providing services to, special education services to students at Locor in the Spanish-American Program, that we're providing them in Spanish. So, it's my job now to figure out how to answer the question that you just posed. And I don't have the answer yet. We're spending a lot of time thinking about it, and we're going to continue to spend a lot of time thinking about it. So, I think I have to give you the frustrating answer that I can't give you an answer yet. But that is something we're working very hard on.
Do we have specialized staff that is in, that has room in their caseload? Currently?
When you say specialized staff, what do you mean?
Special ed, are there specialized teachers in the district that have room on their caseload? Because, to your point, after third grade in Spanish-American, there's a lot more English traffic. So, those children don't necessarily have to have their entire IP filled by some Spanish. So, you know, any specialized teacher, in theory, who has a certification needed, could do that, and Spanish would not be an issue. But we have yet to move over anyone to help service five classrooms of kids that are still being serviced by...
I would imagine that if all of our special educators in the district right now would say, "No, they don't have space sitting in their caseloads." That doesn't mean that we're not going to have to take a look at what people's caseloads look like for next year to make, to figure out how we're going to meet everybody's service. So, is there, is there space where people are sitting around going, "Oh, my gosh, I feel kind of bored." Like, that ain't happening. And I know you're not suggesting that.
I am not suggesting that.
I know you're not suggesting that.
That's true. So, my concern is not, my concern is making people on the Finance Committee and people on the Select Board understand sort of what the challenges are so that our staff isn't so overloaded that they're completely burnt out. So, our children are getting all of their servicemen and all of everything that they're obligated to have. You know, it's like, I understand, like, the economic pressures, but...
I agree 100% with everything that you just said. And I think the political reality is that that ship has sailed. I believe that the vote has happened. So, the budget has been voted. And so, I don't believe there is a mechanism to change that.
Town meeting floor.
Right, the town meeting floor, like, an amendment could be proposed, right? Or a amendment, or...
Yeah, you're a better judge.
Could be proposed to vote a higher budget. I'm not, I'm not going down that path. In my head, it's, we have a voted budget, this is the budget that we have to live with. And so, now, my responsibility is to figure out how to set us up to meet all of the obligations that you correctly identify and the challenges that we don't have people sitting around wondering, you know, how to keep themselves busy.
And right now, just, just to kind of give some perspective, I think at the last FinCom meeting, was it 6.73%? The tax, the proposed increase to all of us residents' tax, I believe, is 6.73%, which is the highest it's been, like, ever. No, I don't know of ever, but, I mean, that, that's just a really big increase that people... So, that's what the Finance Committee is trying to balance. And I understand, I know, and I understand what you're saying, but...
I know that.
I know you do, but not everyone else, my dear, so... I just wanted to make sure that...
You're looking at the practical implication of those decisions, financial decisions.
You know, I mean, then, by the way, the town, we have to fulfill $450,000 in transportation costs You know, I mean, we have to fulfill $450,000 in transportation costs if it doesn't come in. And then what do we do? You're speaking with the choir up here, so... Just saying it so people are aware. Yeah.
And thank you for pointing that out. This is to the point that Tom made earlier. As a general rule, what we have done as a district is we've been able to prepay some special education out-of-district tuition each year. Going into this year, it was a quarter of a million dollars. We've had circuit breaker funds able to help us out. That's not, that sort of flexibility doesn't exist for next year. There's $150,000 of SED transportation costs that are there that depend on the stabilization fund being set up and funded by the town. And there's $300,000 of transportation costs that depend on the state fully reimbursing the district. There's a lot of, and we're now having to figure out how, with two fewer positions than we had originally planned for, we're going to meet all of the obligations that we have to students. These are not, yeah, this is, I am concerned for what this is going to mean for the budget next year. There are some things, I mean, you all correct me if I'm wrong. There are some things about next year's budget terrain that are different. I think debt service, is that right? There was a significant increase in debt service for next year for Council on Aging, connected to Council on Aging building. And that won't be the same in FY '25, so there's some, that, I don't know how that plays out in terms of the budget-building process, but that might create some flexibility or... And there was one other thing. Was there something else? Yeah, FY '25. So that could help the FY '25 landscape, but, yeah, the FY '24 landscape is looking, is looking tight.
So, yeah, so you're saying essentially that the next year's budget could actually be tighter than this year's? That's how the town chooses to build, right here, the building.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to connect it to the Council on Aging.
No, I know, but that's, money has to be spent somewhere, and that's kind of a hard one. That just sounds like the next year's budget I anticipate would be tighter than...
Next year is going to be very, very tight. Yep, very, because, yeah, with a school system with 2,700 students, you know, inevitably, things happen, and you suddenly have to shift and meet a need that you weren't able to predict nine months earlier. We had to shift and meet needs that we weren't able, that the school committee wasn't able to predict, you know, 12 months before in terms of increased out-of-district transfer tuition and transportation costs this year. So inevitably, new challenges come up that you weren't able to predict. I mean, I think the district is just, is in a tougher place to absorb those inevitable challenges. Next year is going to, this requires some difficult decision-making.
Can we assume that these higher SED costs will be every year going forward? It's not like next year is a really expensive year. This is the new normal cost for these situations?
So I'm cautious about, and Tom and BJ, please chime in. So we have not seen, we have not seen really much of an increase in terms of new students going out of district this year. Most of that cost is, is cost that was absorbed going into this school year. So Dr. Cataldo has done a lot of work to keep students in the district, which is where we want them. And so that increase is one that I think is an aberration. You know, doing things like building the language-based classroom is going to help us keep students in the district. But those costs are now in the budget, and so those costs are not then going to drop. So I would be pretty surprised if there's another significant increase in out-of-district tuition or transportation in FY '25. But the costs that are already built in for FY '24 are likely to. I can jump in if you all think it's different. And I'm being very speculative here, so don't hold me to this, but I would be surprised if those costs go up much or go down much.
We should just assume this is what it is.
I think that's probably a conservative assumption.
I don't, I don't agree from the standpoint, this is a highly unusual year. What I stated to the finance committee the night they came for the school committee meeting, so this is not a hidden fact, that my first week when I was in the district, I got nine letters for unilateral replacements, which is, I didn't even get five in town years. So to get nine in a week is extraordinary.
Explain what that is.
Oh, unilateral replacement, sorry. I'm assuming you all know, because some of you are in my world. But that is when a parent elects to place their child in an approved school, sometimes a not-approved school, and ask for the town to still pay the tuition rate. And so we have that, we certainly had a number of students who left the district that had been working up through the course of last year, it came, as the spring came to an end. So now you have this pocket of students. But this year, we've been very careful, we've been kind of, we have been looking at building the programs we need to build to make sure that doesn't happen. So I think what you'll see is, it's here, but it will start to roll down over the next few years. And in terms of the number of students that we've looked to find a different home because we couldn't provide the appropriate education for them in district, is a more, is a typical number. In fact, we're a little bit below average this year in comparison. So my belief is, it's not that one year is going to balance another, but you, you know, students who are older will come off the list more quickly. Students who are very young, anywhere from three to eight, they're going to take longer to get off the list. But the fact is, if we are really doing our job in finding ways to provide for our children to stay in our community as we should be, then in the next few years, you're going to see that list drop. Those numbers will, it's, if anything, well, tuition is rising at some point, it will equal up, and then it will come down.
Other questions?
So see you all at town meeting, right?
Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Perry, thanks, Tom, thanks, Dr. Cataldo.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both.